This is the opt-out of AUD. Lori Witt and our Director of Development Services. Sorry for delay. Welcome. We have a forum, so you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. At the last meeting, you had a discussion on the accessory dwelling units regarding the Public Act 2129. Just as a quick summary, the purpose of that, in that, in that public act is to promote alternative, less expensive, inequitable housing. It could be affordable, but we are actually exempt from the Affordable Housing statute. It was really started from a group called Desegregate Connecticut, and they were just trying to promote more fair housing throughout the Connecticut. So you did have a couple of specific questions at the last meeting. The first one was, how often does the town receive applications for or has the PCC approved an accessory dwelling unit or an ADU? And the, the short answer to that is never because we don't allow them. So, and the same question for accessory apartments, which we do allow, and we call them in-law apartments. We usually get about one per year. We actually were kind of surprised when we looked back at that, that we didn't have more, but... So the accessory dwelling unit or accessory apartments, I'm sorry, accessory apartments or in-law apartments are basically for in-laws or relatives. They're temporary housing only. They require a special permit from the Planning and Zoning Commission. The maximum apartment size is 400 to 750 square feet, and the minimum lot size that you could put one of these on is 17,000 square feet. Now, these are usually attached to or somehow within the same house. So there's usually, you know, you close the door and lock it, and the units are separate, but they're still within the same unit or the same structure because it's family. So, you know, nobody's really trying to lock their family out. Well, we hope not anyway. So, your second question was, what is the effect of if the town does not completely opt out? And basically, if the town does not opt out, we essentially would be bound to include the regulations as proposed in the act. No regulation would be stricken because there's nothing in our regulations that are counter to these regulations. The accessory dwelling unit acts as a permanent structure. It is bound by, you know, full fire and building code regulations where the temporary structures, apartments are not. Maximum size of about 1,000 square feet or 30% of the primary structure of the, of the, of the residential zone. It is considered permanent housing, and there is no minimum lot size, but it does need to meet the zoning setbacks and coverage, so the bulk and area requirements. And they have also included a maximum of one parking space per accessory dwelling unit. So, does anybody have any questions at this point?
Counselor Spurazza.
Yes, sir.
Lori, it's such an important... Well, I want to make sure, I want to make sure that I understand it, and I think I do, but I just want to take a minute. Starting at the beginning, you said that we're exempt from the low housing requirement. Now, isn't that because we already meet and surpassed that in town?
That is correct. We surpassed the 10% affordable housing units in town. We're actually up just below 13% right now.
Okay. So we've not only met the, the bar at the state, is that we've exceeded it currently?
That is correct.
Number two, the purpose that we have planning and zoning and special use permits, and tell me if I'm wrong with this, isn't their primary function to ensure that what additions are put on property, they look out for certain things like setbacks? So you can't build something right up against your neighbor's house? You have to have so much space? The water impact that might happen, all these different things? And more importantly, during these sessions, doesn't the public have a right to come and speak for or against these projects? Is that all true?
All of that is true.
Okay. So if we opt, if we don't opt out, people will no longer have to abide by setbacks? They will no longer have the ability to come and have a public hearing because this is going to say, it's just going to happen, and we give up total local control? Did I say that correctly?
Well, yes, kind of.
Okay.
So, so they would not have to have the public hearing, they would still have to abide by the...
The building codes, right.
No, by the, by the setbacks and coverage.
Okay.
But it would just be by, it would be by right with the zoning permit. So there wouldn't be a public hearing, and you would not be able to come and speak in favor or against it.
Even if it was my neighbor?
Correct.
Yeah, so you'd take the voice away from people with that?
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Manchin and Counselor Riley and Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Thank you. Thank you, Lori, for coming before us. Appreciate it. And thank you for answering these questions. I have a couple of questions, concerns. First, I think this is, well, premature to vote on this currently. And getting to the heart of what Carl, Councilwoman Spurazza just said, not giving people the voice or the right to speak is totally against migraine. But in addition to that, if this is infrequent, why are we addressing it to begin with? And then my second part of that question, if the Planning and Zoning Commission is going to be rewriting regulations, why don't we wait until we get to that juncture before the council looks at these other issues? And then looking at some of the answers that you've provided, for example, on number two, if the town doesn't opt out, an ADU could be placed on a parcel where the single family, provided conditions for bulk and area requirements are met. I'm not sure I understand that exactly, but, you know, it's confusing to me. And then also, when you're talking about the last paragraph on August 5th, the Planning and Zoning Commission exercised discretion to opt out due to, and section, second sentence, lack of predictability with expected backyard privacy. We're talking about quiet enjoyment, is what I'm interpreting that as, quiet enjoyment? But how can you predict the lack of quiet enjoyment? It's unpredictable. I mean, people have parties all the time in their backyards. The minute you call a cop, the party stops. So, I mean, I think that's a fluid statement right there. So again, I appreciate you responding to all these questions, but a couple of the sticking points for me, and I'm just going to be perfectly open about it, is the fact that it's infrequent, Planning and Zoning hasn't done the rewriting, and I think most importantly for me, if people aren't going to have a voice in the fashion of the public hearing or otherwise, that's just not fair. But thank you. I appreciate your time.
Counselor Riley and Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Do you want me to respond to those questions?
Oh, I'm sorry. I figured you were... Go ahead. No, go ahead.
So, we, the Planning and Zoning is the one that decided to go forward with the opt-out. I do believe that we have until 2023, but...
I think it's January 1, 2022, actually. That's why.
Well, I'm not...
No, I think it's January 1, 2022.
So, it's very unclear in, in the act.
Sorry.
So, I agree that during the rewrite, that we would certainly look at the accessory dwelling units as a permitted use, but with regulations and guidance, not probably by right. I can't guarantee that it won't be by right because I'm not the one that will approve these, but I think that there will be, they'll have a little bit more restrictions than by right, and probably a public hearing, is my, my guess. The infrequency is for the in-law apartments. The reason that we don't have a, a number for the accessory dwelling units is because they're not actually permitted. It almost is like allowing a second dwelling unit on a single-family lot. So, and we do allow up to four plexes on some residential lots. So, the bulk and area, when you referred to number two, the maximum size is 1,000 square feet with some restrictions and zoning setbacks and coverage. So it still has to abide by the existing bulk and area requirements regardless. So one of the concerns that I had was that, for instance, in the Thompsonville section, a lot, we, our coverage there is up in the 30, 40, 50, 60% coverage, where most of the rest of the town residential area is 20%. And if, if somebody could just by right put on every single-family property in Thompsonville another dwelling unit, I think that we might have some issues. It might, the density might increase. We, we actually will probably have some utility issues. And those were some concerns of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Did I get that? The predictability, part of zoning is to provide predictability of what you can use your property and what your neighbor could use your property as. So if you're buying a single-family house next to another single-family house, you kind of think, well, I'm only buying it next to a, a single-family dwelling, not a single-family dwelling with another house as an accessory dwelling unit. And as a planner, I think that we absolutely need to have, permit these accessory dwelling units, but I think it needs to be done in the proper fashion. So...
Sorry. Counselor Larry Riley, then Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Okay. So, for lot coverage, if the house and the other buildings are already at the max coverage or close to it, um, sorry, the feedback's tripping me out here. Hold on. So if it's close to it and already met the whole coverage, then they are not allowed to do the accessory building unit? Or they can build up to that percentage? Or does it like start all over again and you get 1,000 square feet?
No, no. It would base, it would be based on the existing coverage prior to the accessory dwelling unit being added. So they couldn't exceed the maximum coverage for the site with the new unit.
Okay. And then, so let's just say, um, we didn't opt out, and then the state decided to change this regulation that they already wrote. Would we then be able to have another opportunity to opt out? Or are we like locked in for good if we don't opt out?
Defer that to legal, actually. But quite honestly, I think that, that would be a new act, and we'd have to look at it on its own surface, so...
Okay. And then, just to be 100% clear, if we opt out of this, it will still keep the ability of us, of residents, to have a public hearing on the situation?
If we opt out of this, currently, you will still need, require a public hearing to have an in-law apartment. We still don't allow the accessory dwelling units, but I do believe that we will permit them under certain circumstances.
Okay. And do you have a timeframe of when a regulation might be written regarding this?
Our complete rewrite is hopefully going to be done in spring of 2023, or 22, 22, not 23.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
Perfect. Thank you. I appreciate it.
No problem.
Deputy Mayor Suzak and Counselor Crisanti.
Okay. So I guess my thing is, when, if, if we do not opt out, and these units go into single-family lots, are there additional utilities brought in? Is there now another electric, another sewer, another, whatever we, that home needs for utilities? Or are they just an extension of the primary dwelling?
I believe it could, it could be either. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
That's okay. So for me, I feel that if we don't opt out, then we are not allowing our planning and zoning to look at how our community is structured, to put these, you know, auxiliary units in places where it won't be a taxing situation for utilities or will change the whole character of a neighborhood. Because people are always very conscious of when they're buying a home, what is the expectation of what you're going to have there? And if you read your local zoning laws, you would know that. But when the state takes over and let, and allows, or, or under, under rights or, you know, the, the town zoning, it always is very controversial. I mean, look at the, you know, the Siting Commission for solar. We allow solar, but nobody seems to want to put solar where we allow it. They would rather go to the state and have the state override anything that we have. And that, you know, for me, I listen, you know, hour on end of that. And I really, for me, I think it's important for us to opt out of this and take care of it the way we can take care of it best for Enfield. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Crisanti, then Counselor Sacala.
Hi, Lori. How are you?
Hi, good.
Thank you for answering the questions that, that we presented to you. You know, I'm looking at like the, the last chapter or the last paragraph that, that you had written, in order to address issues of equitable and alternative housing, okay? And that's very important because when I look at, a lot of the reason people put these in-law apartments on, they are for maybe elderly, disabled children, disabled adults, that families have to do this. It's like a multicultural, uh, alternative type of housing for people. I'm against having like separate dwellings, but if they're attached to the house, to me, that's something that, that could be equitable for people. Now, housing has to be fair for everybody, okay? And I don't have an issue. I, there's one issue. If I knew what the exact plans, because you're saying that you're going to be rewriting the, the zoning laws, I would feel a heck of a lot more comfortable seeing what I'm actually going to be, how things are going to change because you're opting out.
Right.
Have you even discussed that yet? Have you ever, have you changed that yet? And here we are, we're voting on something that you don't really have to act on until 2023, and we're in 2021, and it just seems that you just didn't like, okay, a group of people came together and said, oh, we want to opt out of it. Not that I'm totally disagreeing with it. I am not totally disagreeing with it. I would feel comfortable if I knew what the regulations are going to be before we opt out. That's what I'm, that's my whole point. The other thing in regard to this law is the required training and certification, okay? There are adopt requirements for planning and zoning commissions to be trained. Commissioners will undergo four hours of training every other year, including at least one hour concerning affordable and fair housing policies. And then the zoning enforcement official also has to become certified. Was that taking into consideration why we want to opt out?
I, I will say that...
I just want to know if that was just...
That, that was not necessarily considered as a primary consideration. However, that when the Planning and Zoning decided to opt out, which was a unanimous vote back in August, they just decided that they just wanted to move forward with it. As, I don't, I don't, you know, I think that they're thinking that the opt-out was by the January 1st, 22. But their reasoning was because of overtaxing utilities, as was discussed earlier, the lack of predictability, which is also what, what if your concerns. Drainage issues, a lot of the subdivisions were created in wetlands, and that could always be a concern if everybody decides to build out to their maximum coverage. We could have some issues. Traffic and on-street parking, and again, the lack of oversight.
No, no, I, I get that because you've only had since 2017, only six, six or seven units that were, that were built up. Once again, I'm just going to go back and say, I would feel comfortable, not that I'm totally against everything that's going on, but I would feel a heck of a lot more comfortable if I knew what the new zoning regs are, and then I could make a...
Right.
A vote on it.
I, I can't tell you what they are.
Especially if you, if you haven't even discussed what was going to be in the new zoning regulations.
I, I think that what we have discussed is that we should address it and prepare for it and allow it, but by our guidance, not the state's.
Yeah, no. You know, and like I said, there, there are some parts that, that I agree with, and then there are some other ones that, that I don't, you know? But I myself would feel comfortable if I knew what the new zoning regs were. You know, we still have time to be able to, you set your, your, your regulations, then we come back for a vote. That's, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may just weigh in on some of the timing issues?
Go ahead.
In response to, if I could just supplement some of Lori's responses. So, Public Act 2129, an act concerning the zoning enabling act, accessory apartments, training for certain land use officials, and it goes on, is a 28-page piece of legislation, Counselor. I attempted to summarize it in my memo of July 16, 2021, and I just want to correct the record with regard to this distinction between, do we have until January 1, 2023? What's the urgency if we have all that time? And it's not that simple.
Okay.
If you read the act, many of the provisions become effective October 1, 2021, which was Friday. And any existing zoning regulations that conflict with those new portions of the state law that took effect Friday will be deemed null and void. I believe effective January 1, 2022, and I'm referring to Section 6 of the Act, page 13 of 28 pages. And so I, I've seen, I mean, and listen, it's 28 pages of new law, and so lawyers can argue about it, but it was presented to me, and my interpretation of it is that you, municipalities have until January 1, 23 to opt out, but because many of the provisions took effect last Friday, you have a smaller window where you can be out of compliance. And if you're out of compliance, it's possible that of January 1, 2022, certain of our provisions might be null and void.
Yeah, I have it right in front of me. Thank you.
Counselor Sacala.
All right. So I'm going to be perfectly honest. I mean, I consider myself a pretty intelligent person. I mean, I can read the law. I'm having a really tough time with this because we were, we're voting to opt out of something so something can happen, like the double negatives, it just, it kills me. But here's my specific question. If we don't opt out, can a person by right go and put another dwelling on their home if they have already reached the coverage percentage that is allowed by our regulations?
Absolutely not.
So they still have to abide by our zoning regs even if we haven't opted out?
Correct.
So your example of being worried that down in Thompsonville, people would be putting ADUs up all over the place?
Not going to happen.
That's not going to happen because if they're already reached, if they've already reached that threshold, they can't put one up anyway. So only people who have the ability and the availability of whatever percentage can be covered on their lot, they have the option. So not everybody will.
Right. It would be really difficult for us to ascertain exactly how many residential, single-family lots would be able to put this in. That would be a huge study.
Yeah. No, and I, I get that. I'm just trying to clarify a couple of the things that you said.
No, but that's, that is correct, what you just repeated.
All right. Thank you.
Counselor Enger, then Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Hi, Lori.
Hi.
I'm trying to understand how the ADUs would benefit Enfield. I'm always looking to improve it, and I just don't, I'm not convinced yet that this is something that's going to improve things. We're, we're a residential area. We're a suburb, and this would turn our community into an urban community?
You know, it...
And, and there's only, to the best of my understanding, there's only four other states that have even passed this and approved it. So it's not like the whole country's doing it. To my knowledge, it's only California, Oregon, Vermont, and New York that have passed this. So it's not like, you know, we're falling behind, and, and we have 100,000 people that are trying to move in here, and we need to do this. I don't see how it's going to improve us. It's just going to change our whole skyline. So I don't, I'm not convinced that it's the best thing.
I personally believe that in the right lot, in the right place, that this could be a great opportunity for, for a new dwelling unit. Some, you know, something over a garage or something like that that's actually separate that isn't for in-law apartments, you know, or in-law relatives. However, it's, if, if you do it without any guidance or rules, it could backfire. Will it? I don't know. Will everybody come in and ask for this? Maybe, maybe not. It's hard to tell. But it's, it's just another way to diversify the housing stock.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Lori, would you say that this is what had the most impact on our R-44 and R-88 districts? More so than our densely built districts? And also, these units can be as small as 400 square feet. So it could be that the R-33s may be affected by that. But I, I really think that you need good local control in order to get a really good plan. Thanks, Lori.
Yep. I, I think statistically, yeah, you're probably correct. Those are the larger lots, and they're going to be the ones that have the most or the least amount of existing coverage.
Any other questions? Lori, not conforming use, all right. So if the lot's not conforming already, which a lot of our lots are, this doesn't have to conform, correct?
It, it would still comply. I mean, the ADU would still be able to be placed there, provided they haven't met their maximum coverage.
So...
Anywhere a single-family house is permitted.
Right. So I don't think this necessarily affects Tassau, it's just all the other parts of town where if you have a big enough lot, you could subdivide now if you wanted to. So I mean, you know...
Not necessarily if you don't have frontage.
Yeah. It's a better, better option than putting a dwelling in your backyard, and you don't have a public hearing.
There you go.
And I think, again, I think the attorney took care, I mean, you're right. We, what the 1122, the reason why we have to move is we don't have a lot of time, because that's what the state built into the regulations. And oh, by the way, you folks are working on the regulations, but unfortunately, it's not going to be ready till spring. So that's, the urgency was built in by the memo that was sent in July of this year that we all got, and that's why the Plan Z acted in August.
August.
And that's why we're trying to act now, because we don't have a whole lot of time. And it's not because we want to push this, but we have no choice. Question for you on, so currently, what if so, so if someone was going to put one of these in when we do our regulations, would they have to go to wetlands?
If, if the wetlands...
So, because most of our developments are on wetlands.
They would, they would need to go to wetlands if it was impacted.
Okay. So they would. So whether we, so that, but they would, would they have a public hearing or just go through? They wouldn't have to have a public hearing, correct?
No, not typically.
What about easements? What if we have an easement, which we do have a lot of these properties where we have a pipe, and someone decides to want to put one of these in their backyard? So then, we've talked about the utilities. What about our sewage, connecting to our sewage pipes? Which we just spent through six months of some of the worst rain we've ever had, and people have got water in their cellars. And I actually have seen personally, where I actually went to a neighborhood where a woman who actually had a lake in her backyard, because the neighbor who did, again, did a beautiful job in her backyard, but guess what? The water went somewheres. You put one of these in as a permanent structure, we have wetlands all over town. That's my concern, because we just went through it. And when people are getting water in their basement, you know, when you put a dwelling of that structure, whether it's 400 square feet or 1,000, and oh, by the way, who regulates who you can rent it to? That's, that would be outside of your regulations, correct?
No, the, the, the Public Act says it could be...
Anyone, right?
Occupied by anybody.
Correct. That's, and so there's no control there. And, and again, we talked about, we already meet the regulations. We, again, the other beautiful thing is, we also have the first-time homeowner's program that is working.
Yes.
We're bringing people from outside of town, and they're buying properties anywhere in town, anywhere. Keyword, anywhere. So we are committed to getting affordable housing to anyone who wants to purchase a home. We're already committed to it. We have the programs in place. already committed to it. We have the programs in place, and we're committed with the funding. Here, we I think we have no choice but to opt out. We have to trust our local boards, whether you, you know, to do the right thing. That's why we're paying you as our planner or development director. And you're you're working on the regulations. But the state put the the legislation together where we don't have a whole lot of time to actually work through that. And again, you can already add a you can already add an in-law apartment if you'd like to.
Yes.
So.
Provided you get a public hearing.
Right. And exactly. And that's that's a special use permit works. And maybe you can add that in when you're in your to regulations, when you do an ADU, you have a special use permit. So at least someone gets to have a public hearing before you put a structure next to your property.
Yeah.
And again, I've seen some of the complaints with the shed, just the shed. I mean, I you've I know you've heard them too. And when someone just put a shed in their backyard, never mind a dwelling. So sorry, I know you go right ahead. You.
No, no, just a couple of questions I had had from the questions from the council. One, Lori, that you touched upon, especially in Thompsonville, especially in the winter with the storms and no parking, it's a it's a real challenge now. I know you said that with these, the big difference is they don't have to actually be family, so they're not an in-law unit, and they don't have to be attached, and the sizes can be different. So if you get a couple or three people, however, you're going to determine what the occupancy can be, especially in Thompsonville. Did you say they are required to have up to one additional parking space, or there won't even be a minimum? My concern being, Lori, you go to one of these places, maybe the coverage on the lot is technically enough, but where are those people going to park? Because there's not parking now. Do they have to have parking, or they don't have to have any at all, and it's going to be a dog-eat-dog contest on the sidewalk like it is now?
So the I'm sorry, so the act actually calls for the a maximum of one parking space for the accessory dwelling unit?
So they don't have to have a minimum?
They don't have to have to have a minimum, but you can only.
So in these areas, you can put in in one neighborhood ostensibly, 20 of these have 100 or 200 new people, and we have no accommodations for parking?
Theoretically.
I mean, to me, that that to me, and I've been following it, and I, you know, back and forth, I think, obviously, with control and with measured response, we should allow more than what we have. I think there's not a great demand right now for the in-law because of that requirement. But as Bob said, there are others who might be benefiting from this, handicapped others, don't have to necessarily be a blood relative now to be a family member. So I think that that would be important. But my big concern, and also will tell you down there, the pump station, you know, under our ARA money, we're dedicating a lot of funds. We have to spend about 13 to 14 million. And I would be remiss, I'll just have Donald Nunes, one of the problem children of the pump stations, is the one down in Thompsonville. We have a real serious situation of not only improving it, but maybe having to move it. I don't know what the effect of this increase would be on that pump station. I will ask him to look at that immediately. If I'd known it was an issue, I thought there were other controls, but I want to make sure that we're not, you know, buying a very, very expensive problem here. But my I really have to say to you, and I think to Counselor Magini, her big concern is all of ours. If you opt out, there are no hearings. We no longer have an ability for neighbors or people affected. So I think just know that's the law of unintended consequences. We want to do a good deed. But as soon as these come in, you're going to be the recipient of the neighbor saying, oh, my gosh, where are these people going to park? It's a nightmare right now, and all the other issues. So I just I wish I would really like to know from the town attorney more a little more clearly if the drop dead date, based on our situation, is the first of this year or the first of next year. I think, you know, if we don't do it, and some things have been put in place, well, okay, it's already happened. We're already bound by them. But I think for your purpose, if you want more information, we really need to know the timeframe, because I think it's not appropriate to ask these folks to vote if they have a year as compared to they have a month.
The answer is this, that a town may not opt out after January 1, 2023. Between October 1 of 2021 and January 1, 2023, any of our regulations that conflict with this, I think, are subject to being declared null and void. And it's a case by case basis. If on a particular lot, somebody came in and said, I want to do this, and their counselor, they could argue, based on the new law, I'm entitled as of right to do this because it conflicts with your reg.
Exactly.
That's the that's the implication if you don't opt out.
It's exact.
But it's a case by case basis.
It's exactly the answer. Sorry. I mean, and again, like you said, we are providing affordable housing. We're committed to providing affordable housing all over town. And one more, say, first time homeowners program is working, the applications are coming from outside of Enfield, and they're buying properties all over town. That's 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 being fair and equitable. Not allowing someone to put a dwelling in their backyard, and it ruins your yard because, you know what, you can't go and send a public hearing, which you can do now. You can show up and say, hey, I would really want to work with the neighbor, but, you know, you know, my beautiful backyard is going to be underwater every time we have, which we've had tons of rain. And again, if you've been one of those folks, and I recommend you talking to one of those neighbors who've actually had a flood in their backyard over the last six months, it's not pretty. I'm just being honest. Yeah. Sorry. Any other questions for Lori? Charlotte, so go ahead.
Yeah, the other question and concern that I had was, like, for blight, it's going to like change all of our blight rules, too, because if they can only do blight with what you could see in the backyard, but now you have an accessory dwelling unit, does your backyard now become the front yard and open for, you know, consideration into blight? Like, what if the person who is in the accessory dwelling unit, you know, doesn't do their share of the yard or has, you know, junk all over the place? And those are other things, I think, that are worrisome about it. I'm not saying that I don't, you know, agree that people should have, you know, in-law apartments because those, you know, are very beneficial and stuff. But I mean, if planning and zoning already had a unanimous vote about it, you know, I think we should trust, you know, what they're going to do is going to be right for the town. I mean, we all appoint them. But the other blight was the other thing that I was concerned about.
Yeah, with valid concern.
So basically, if you if you can't see in the backyard from the road, unless the neighbor that a butts in the back complains, unfortunately, you're stuck with whatever's in the backyard. And we can't, we can't do our zoning that we're or our our blight ordinances and our fines and things that we can control when you can see the front of the property, which has been very effective, especially on abandoned properties in town where we've been able to clean and lean, flip them and get them back onto the tax rolls. So again, your neighborhood values go up as opposed to a property that sits there for 20 years and collects, you know, collects fines. That's that's actually a great point.
Yeah, that's certainly a valid concern.
Sorry, Lori, in closing, anything? I know we're getting over.
You know, I just wanted to give you kind of the facts. I'm not sure if there's anything in our zoning regulations that would become null and void. And by by that, I wonder, by the fact that we don't have any accessory dwelling units permitted currently, would we have to take that into consideration and have to adopt these regulations? And I'm not sure if anybody's prepared to answer that question at this point, because we don't have anything that would be contrary to this. But that means we have nothing. So I don't know how that weighs.
Which I don't know if is a good thing. Sorry, I hear you. I don't know if it's a good thing with the state with the with the law the way it's written, having nothing, so.
But I will say that, you know, part of the act also requires that we do a five-year housing plan and housing study, which will have to show affordable housing promotion of affordable housing. So we're going to be doing that regardless.
Thank you. Any other questions for Lori? Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.